I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Marked the meeting open at six oh, or excuse me, 7:06 PM. And we'll start with item number three, public comment. Is there any public comments? Is there any public comments? Okay, hearing no public comment, we will close public comment to the end of the meeting. We'll move item, we'll move to item number four, approve minutes from the August 16, 2016 regular meeting. Have a motion to do so. Motion by Nicole, second by Anne Marie. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Cheer votes aye, motion passes six zero. In your packets, you have the minutes from the special town meeting, which were not a part of the packet that was sent out. So at this point, I'd like to make a motion to add to the agenda. Approval of minutes from the special town meeting dated August 16, 2016. Motion by Nicole, second by Anne Marie. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Cheer votes aye, motion passes six zero. Next item on the agenda, approve minutes from the special town meeting dated August 16, 2016. Have a motion to do so. Motion by Nicole.
Second.
Second by Al. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Cheer votes aye, motion passes six zero. Next item, item number five, first selectmen's report. Have a few things for tonight. Working with town council and the members of CARES, we are very close to signing the agreement to convert the old animal shelter into an animal rescue. I expect to have this completed in the next week or two, and we'll advise the board when it's done. Rich and I are working with Bruce Baker on behalf of the church to finalize a draft agreement between the town and the church for the extra parking at the community center. I expect this process to be completed by our next meeting to allow selectmen to formally vote and approve and move the, everything forward. As discussed, the remaining road work will be starting this week. We, this work will be the large patching that will be done on the major roads around town, that being Skoakarat and Old Ansonia and so on. Once that is completed and the sidewalk work downtown is done, we'll be starting the process of completely redoing First Street, Wakely, and Forest Streets, including additional sidewalk work. We also have a plan in place to redo the town hall parking lot, if possible, money permitting. As part of the CCM public policy development process, I've been named to both the Policy Committee on Labor Relations and the Policy Committee on Taxes and Finances. Meeting for both committees will begin in the next few weeks as we ramp up our efforts for the upcoming legislative session. I look forward to, again, providing my input into the agenda CCM will put forward to our state legislators. Attending the Noggetuck Valley Council of Governments Transportation Technical Advisory Committee, or T-TAC, last week with Brian Asteriak. During the meeting, we received a great deal of information on several programs and issues facing Connecticut towns and cities. Brian will be attending the meeting going forward to represent Seymour. Excuse me, while at the meeting, we learned of the potential of Bongay Road and Mountain Road being able to qualify for the Lot Set Program, which is the old federal transportation money. If this is the case, we'll be able to use federal transportation dollars to fund the repairs of these two roads, freeing up over $2 million to be used on other roads in Seymour. This is the same program we are using funds to repair Holbrook Road, which we expect to start at some point in 2017. So if we're able to get Mountain Road and Bongay Road into this program, we'll be able to do both roads from top to bottom, either very late in 2017 or the early part of 2018, which would be a benefit. So, but I'll keep you posted on that. Tax collections for fiscal year 2017 has started off very strong. For the fourth year in a row, the amount of money collected in July and August has exceeded the prior year's collection. Tax collection overall has exceeded budget each of the last four years. This is a credit to our tax collectors and shows the hard work and effort that they put in day in and day out. Had a very positive meeting with a developer who is interested in the Housatonic Wire site. They are currently in the process of doing their due diligence on the property to confirm the initial plans they had for the site will work. My office has been in direct contact with them over the last few weeks, providing information, and I hope to have more information to share in the next few weeks. Actually Rory's been working very closely with the developer, providing him a substantial amount of information. Today, I also met with Ron Specter regarding the Tri-Town Plaza property. Meeting went extremely well. Ron shared his plans for the property and the steps he will be taking over the next couple of weeks. If all goes as planned, he expects to be pulling a demo permit to start the process of taking down some of the existing buildings and reconfiguring parking and driveway entrances to make the site more user-friendly. I'll provide updates over the next few weeks as they become available, but this is certainly very good news for the town. The reason I don't have specific dates is there is some concern that there may be some remediation work that's needed. So he doesn't want to commit to a timeline until he has that report in hand. But I expect that the buildings will be down by the end of the year. So that's certainly, certainly a good thing. So with that, I'll close the first selectmen's report. Item number six, discussion, take possible action regarding culture and arts request. We have a mystery request from the Culture and Arts Commission, so I will turn it over to their chairwoman, Mrs. Simpson. Keep talking to the mic. My mother wants to be able to hear you. See that, Mom?
On October 29th, in honor of our 10th year of having Downtown Trick or Treat Day, we are going to have a parade. And we've already went over this with Mr. Sackowski, and they're going to close Main Street just from Bank Street around the post office and back up to First and back to Bank. It's probably 45 minutes.
Mm-hmm.
Because we do get between 500 and 700 children. And so that's going to be, in the middle school, the band is going to play traditional Halloween music. So we've done a lot on that aspect of it. So I just need to inform you, let you know, get your approval to do this.
Okay. Any board members have any questions before we make any motions? No? So this will be just the kids, obviously marching?
It'll start approximately quarter to 1:00 and end by 3:30. I mean, the street will be open, but we'll have the normal closing of First and Bank, where the kids go to the stores.
Yep.
And then, you know, they'll open again.
Okay.
And I introduced myself to the new person over at, I think it's something Peacock, where Flashback used to be. And they're very excited about joining our forces. I think I introduced myself Saturday night when there was a big crowd and get them interested, and they were very much for it.
Excellent.
Something else we have for Valentine's Day, but I'm going to have Valerie talk on it. And the other, other thing I have is we want to have a change in venue for our concerts.
Okay.
Right now, we meet at Bank and First, in that garage. I mean, it's disgusting to have people come and sit there. And now with one way, it causes, you know, a difficulty for people because they can't go out. They go to the pizza place, they can't come back now. So we were wondering if we could use the town hall parking lot.
Okay.
And pull our electricity, you know, from the town hall as we have done on Founder's Day and such. And this way, it would be confined in that area. People could park all over. We wouldn't be stopped, we would not be closing any streets anymore for our concerts.
Okay.
Because they would be confined. And like I said, we, as you know, we can't use Seymour Plaza, but we can blast them with our music. So if you would take that under consideration, we'd like to, because we start, we start in October to do our planning for our concerts.
For next, yeah, for two dozen days.
So those are our two, two of our three requests.
Okay.
Valerie, Deanna, she's on our panel.
I'm going to pass this around in conjunction with, I'll go through you. The 10th anniversary, what we'd like to do is place scarecrows in different areas of the downtown. One will be located at the train station, and the other ones will be located in different areas. It's, Culture and Arts will take care of getting them put up. I've already asked some neighbors for, you know, volunteer help and everything. So they'll be clamped to the light posts. Clamp one at the top, one at the bottom, so they're secure.
Okay.
All right.
The black lamps that are all downtown?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, and there's, they stand about eight feet tall, and Culture and Arts will take care of doing all the work and putting them up and taking them down. All right? Any questions?
I'm just curious, what would be the timeframe where they'd be up and down?
Right now, we're looking at putting them on October 1st and getting it down as soon as, I mean, October 1st, and getting them down as soon as November 1st.
We'll have to get back to you on the date.
Okay.
We'll have putting up, because I have to check the timeline of the new poles.
All right.
As part of the Main Street Investment Fund grant, they're redoing the poles downtown. But some of them are just going to be the tops, correct, Rory? Yeah, so let me get some details on that, and then we'll coordinate the, the timing. No. They don't, they don't like that. Yeah. No, I mean, I, I don't think it's going to be an issue. I just want to confirm the dates, because if you want to go beginning of October, I just want to make sure the work is done. That's all. Yeah, I don't think it's a, yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah, no, that's a great thing.
That was a great idea.
Yeah. Yep, not a problem. I mean, the one thing, we just need to make sure with the hay bales and things, that it's, everything stays handicap accessible and don't block any of the narrow sidewalks downtown. Yeah. Yeah, so we just want to make sure that that's all, that's all covered. But, yeah, so either myself, Rory, or Dee will get back in touch with you just to confirm the dates, because if it's just the globes that we're redoing on the top, then not a problem. You can put the scarecrows up on October, well, assuming the board approves it, then you can put the scarecrows up right away. If we're going to be changing any poles or public works, if we're going to be doing any work to the poles, then we'll just figure out the timeframe. Okay, so, yeah, we can work around it. Why don't you swing by tomorrow with the specific poles? Or, or the next day? No, 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 just what poles you're going to use. That's only, they come walking in with six dug up light poles. Just, let me rephrase, the location of the six poles you'll be picking. And then we can make sure if work is being done, those get done first or something like that in the next couple of weeks.
No, the poles, the scarecrows, it sits up.
Yeah. That's fantastic. Fantastic. Well, we'll let you know in two seconds. Any other questions for Culture and Arts?
Just one question. So if you move the concert to town hall parking lot, where do you see people sitting? Do you think there's going to be enough room in the parking lot for everybody? Yeah, well, I, you know, I saw that. I, they, that amount of people might not fit in that parking lot.
We were nothing out there. Yes, last time, we, they're all gone.
The next flat, the next flashback is coming, though. We have to, be aware of that.
That's right.
I think, yeah, I think it'll probably be okay too. Okay. Yeah, because obviously, they don't like anybody going in there, so, all right.
Okay, any other questions?
No questions.
Three separate motions?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so at this point, then I'll entertain a motion to approve Culture and Arts request for a children's Halloween parade in downtown Seymour pending approval of the Seymour Police Department. Motion by Stefan, second by Anne Marie. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Cheer votes aye, motion passes six zero. So once they're set, you're all set. I'll entertain a motion to approve Culture and Arts request that, starting with the concerts in 2018, that the first, oh, sorry, God.
It's only 2016.
Yeah, sorry, 2017. Downtown concerts will be held in the town hall parking lot pending appropriate scheduling. Motion by Stefan, second by Nicole. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Cheer votes aye, motion passes six zero. Then I'll entertain a motion to accept the request of the Culture and Arts Committee to hang scarecrows from the black light posts around the downtown area as...
Decorations.
What's the word I'm searching for? Requested?
Yeah.
Yeah, requested. Motion by Len, second by Stefan. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Cheer votes aye, motion passes six zero. Thank you very much, ladies. Have a great night.
Thank you.
All right. Item number seven, discussion, take possible action regarding awarding of Chatfield Farms bid. In your packet, you have a letter from B&amp;B Engineering, Brian Asteriak. Says, "As you are aware, developer did not complete all the work required for the subject subdivision project. The work included paving, concrete sidewalks, stabilization, and other miscellaneous items. The town pursued and was successful in obtaining funds from the developer's letter of credit. I solicited and received three bids for the work associated for completing the subdivision for Forest Construction, Griffin Brothers Excavating, and A&amp;J Construction. After review, Forest Construction is the low bidder at $190,000. It is my recommendation that the town, the town, excuse me, approves and contracts with Forest Construction in order to move forward and complete the needed work. Should you have any questions regarding this matter, please don't hesitate to call me. Sincerely, Brian P. Asteriak." All right, so what happened was, this was a development, that the developer did not finish the work as prescribed by planning and zoning. They had their letter of credits. Because the work was not completed, we worked through town council to have the money made available to complete this work through that letter of credit. So while this is not a town job, it is not attached to the same rules as town bidding normally would be. But we did ask Brian to go out and solicit three different bids just to make sure we were getting the best price and the best work available. So, again, his recommendation is Forest Construction. So at this point, I will entertain a motion that the town of Seymour award the outstanding work for Chatfield Farms subdivision to Forest Construction in an amount not to exceed $190,000. Motion by Len.
Second.
Second by Al. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Cheer votes aye, motion passes six zero. Next item on the agenda is item number eight, discussion, take possible action regarding dissolution of the Downtown Committee. As you know, the Downtown Committee was created as part of the Downtown Action Strategy that was done back in 2012. At this point, the Downtown Committee has completed its charge, so we'll be looking to remove the committee from our roster of committees. Any work or any things that are to be done on an annual basis have been picked up by EDC, including the planting and different things like that. That money has been placed in the EDC budget. So group has not met in some time, I think it's been probably a year since they've met. So this is just going through kind of the formal housekeeping of removing the committee. So at this point, I'll entertain a motion for the formal dissolution of the Downtown Action Committee. Motion by Len, second by Anne Marie. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Cheer votes aye, motion passes six zero. Next item on the agenda is item number nine. We talked in great detail at our last meeting about the adult daycare, or excuse me, the adult care facility, we shouldn't say, daycare. Everybody seemed to be on board. We had very positive interactions with our state legislators. Representative Gentile is actually going to make their actual request, and one of the things that she looked for was actual support from the town of Seymour. So what I want to do is put a motion out there that we all endorse and move forward. That way, she can use the minutes from our meeting to show the State Bond Commission that town of Seymour stands fully behind this project. So I'll read a motion into the record, and then we can ask any questions and take a formal vote. So I'd like to put a motion that the Board of Selectmen fully endorse and supports the team adult care facility at the Seymour Community Center. Furthermore, the Board supports and endorses team's efforts to obtain state bonding funds. Motion by Nicole. Second by Len. Is there any discussion, questions? Everybody's comfortable on everything? Okay. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Cheer votes aye, motion passes six zero. Thank you very much. This is a good thing that we're going to do, I think. Item number 10, discussion, take possible action regarding veterans' tax exemption. At our last meeting, Priscilla, our assistant assessor, came and gave us a presentation with regards to the veterans' tax exemption, which, based on state statute, which was recently changed, gives us the ability to give a better benefit than what has previously been made available because of the statute. I think we all agreed that it was something that we wanted to explore to look more into. I know when myself, Nicole, and Karen did the original ordinance, I believe it was last year, and Rich will talk in a little bit more detail about that. One of the things the three of us had said was, we wish we could do more for the veterans, but unfortunately, we were held back because of state statute, this new statute now, or this update to the statute allows us to do more. So the one outstanding question we had, and I want to give Rich some time to look into this, was whether it's something we can do by resolution or we needed to send it back to the ordinance committee. So Rich, if you wouldn't mind real quick?
If I may, I had recalled that we worked on an ordinance last year in connection with veterans' tax exemptions. And we did, in fact, on July 21, 2015, adopt an ordinance creating an additional property tax exemption for 100% disabled veterans. I think it makes sense to send it to the ordinance committee so that we can look at this issue as a whole and perhaps minimally revise this particular ordinance and also probably adopt an ordinance, an authorization ordinance, that will be on your books in terms of your core veterans' tax exemption program, which you don't have right now.
Okay. Any questions on any of that for Rich? Everybody understands where we're... Okay, so what we'll do is we'll put a motion out there for the Board of Selectmen to formally move this to the ordinance committee. Myself, Nicole, and Karen will dig into it, and then we'll come back with recommendations to the full board. I would expect sometime in October. Not a huge rush on this, because this wouldn't take effect until July 1st, which would impact the October 2016 grant list. So whether we've completed now or June, it doesn't, doesn't change anything, so. Okay, with that, then, I'll entertain a motion that the Board of Selectmen recommend that the ordinance committee review and make recommendations on updating the veterans' tax exemption ordinance. Motion by everybody, seconded by everybody. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Cheer votes aye, motion passes six zero. Item number 11, update on LED streetlight conversion project. Mr. Burke, please speak into the microphone.
So we had a few more questions, basically. It was brought to our attention that one of the vendors had a relationship with distributor of a particular brand. The other vendor only quoted two brands, including that one. So there was a very large range for the cost. What we wanted, what we asked them to do was price out another brand, one that the other vendor had also done, so that we had some, some way to make a comparison. They came back with it, and it was very close to the lower brand, the one that the other vendor did not have a relationship with. So both, both vendors are very competitive. In terms of cost, I think the brands were within 10, maybe 20,000 of one another for both vendors. So it probably will come down to which vendor we feel more comfortable with, you guys feel more comfortable with. The, there is Tanco and there's Real Term. Tanco has been awarded many contracts in Connecticut. In Connecticut. Both vendors have lots of contracts, but in Connecticut, Tanco has the most by far. Real Term has one or two in Connecticut. The brand that there's a relationship with is GE, which obviously is, I think everyone feels comfortable with GE as a brand. The other ones are probably pretty solid, but, you know, we just, we don't know that as well. So if you guys wanted to insist on GE products, then that makes the decision. We, we have no reason to believe that the other brands are not good. You know, like, I think they're perfectly fine. But that's pretty much where it stands. We're going to try to meet with Mark Massaro, our rep from EverSource, next week, just to, the last thing that we want to do is, we've been told that some communities are being offered an LED conversion from the utilities. We want to see if that's possible. The last time we spoke to EverSource, it was not. They offered a pilot program of about 50 lights, which, you know, the opportunity cost of not proceeding, we decided not to. So that's where it stands. I think we can have all the information for you for the next meeting, and then you guys can make a decision.
Any questions or comments for Rory?
Rory, have you spoken to any other towns that have used either one of these companies?
Yeah, we reached out to, Connecticut was a pretty new market when we first started, so it was mostly in other states. They both seemed, like, were confident that both vendors would do a good job. That's not the concern, it's...
What's the concern?
The concern is just if, you know, you guys want to insist on GE fixtures, then the decision is made. You know, or if, you know, $10,000 difference is too much.
So Rory, I know that you reached out to some other communities that had used these companies. That was a while ago, right? How long ago was that a while ago?
Initially, probably about a year ago, we, we reached out for some Tanco people. We reached out more recently, once they started winning bids in Connecticut. Same feedback.
Everything's going well?
Yeah.
Because I was going to say, I was going to have to follow up with a handful, just to see how things were going.
We can certainly do a few more.
Good or bad to say about either company?
Yeah, I think...
How they're fully implementing.
Given the, sort of, lifespan of the project, you know, these conversions have only been happening for a few years. You know, so you're maybe one quarter of the way through the life of these fixtures. It's really, you know, that there's a 10-year warranty on these fixtures, so I think it would be, if you saw problems, it would be a huge red flag. That nobody seemed to report anything, so.
With regard to the, the generic product versus GE, I know called generic, I don't know what the name is. You may not have the information this week, but for next time around, it may not, it may not be a bad idea if it is, say, for example, a $10,000 spread between the two, just to kind of call around, necessarily just in Connecticut, if there's possibly a reference we can have somewhere else in the country that may have done this much, much sooner. Just to kind of understand if there really is much of a difference. I suspect there probably isn't a huge difference, but this way, at least we have some kind of a baseline on, you know, a little bit better information, if it's there. You know, the company should have that information available if, if we request it.
Well, if I can, and that's something that we actually, Rory, myself, and Tony talked a little bit about. You know, if you're using, and again, we'll use generic just for lack of not knowing the name, even though Rory's told it to me 25 times. You know, I think one of the things, because of the span, the lifespan of these lights, and, you know, you're talking 10, 15, 20 years. I think using, potentially using a company like GE might give you a little bit more reassurance, because, you know, GE's going to be around where some of these other companies, you never know if they're going to be around, if they're going to get bought out, if they're going to get merged, different things like that. So that's something that Tony and Rory are putting into their recommendation as well, giving some thought to that, the value of, you know, a company like GE that's been around for, you know, almost 100 years, so.
And the other question I have for you, given that the other company, I know Tanco is, is in a number of communities, the other company, you said, maybe one or two in Connecticut. Do you anticipate any delays with regard to service with the other companies, given the fact that... the fact that they're not as prevalent here? So they may not have as many sources to go to with regard to service calls.
Part of the RFP asked them to identify potential vendors. What these companies, the service they're providing in this project is lighting design, logistics, coordination, you know, they'll be hiring local electrical contractors to perform the work. So those companies have already been identified. It's possible, I guess. I don't know of another community in the very close area that's doing this. We can certainly ask them. Both seem to, we thought they might have to wait until the spring to begin, and they seem to think that they can go through the winter, so. I don't know that there would be a delay, but we can certainly ask them.
And Watertown is in the process as well. They have the two same finalists that we do, and they're the ones that had pointed out to Rory and Tony about Eversource potentially doing that. So when we call, Tony has a relationship with the president of their Board of Aldermen, or Town Council, or whatever his title is. So Tony had reached out to him directly. They're actually gonna meet on Friday to have a conversation as to where Watertown is, and kind of why they're doing what they're doing, so.
This is a new program, Eversource, maybe you...
They may also be UI, so I...
That's what we're trying to find out, kind of what's what.
Well, UI isn't in, the regulated territory doesn't include Watertown.
So then it's gotta be...
It would be Eversource.
Yeah.
That's why we want to find out before. One thing I said to Kurt, part of the savings of this project is the change in rates. I think we're currently under 117. We would switch to 116, which is when you, when the municipality owns the fixtures. You go from paying, basically, $7, call it rent, for using Eversource's pole, because they're also responsible for the maintenance of the fixtures, to 50 cents, and that's per fixture, so that would work out to, you know, roughly 6, 7,000 a month. Whether they have a new, another rate, that is for utility-owned LED lights, we don't know. That's something we want to ask them. And just quickly, with regard to the brands, it's sort of hard to tell, because some of them, for example, Tanco quoted a brand called American Electric, and Real Term quoted a brand called Acuity, which are both owned by the same company. You know, strange corporate structure, it kind of makes it hard. And to give you an example, they both quoted Cree was another brand. It was explained to us that Cree used to be the industry leaders, and then they put out a chipset for the fixtures that was not the best. So now GE has kind of taken over as, but that was the vendor who has a relationship with GE as well. It's, and another thing is that when we, when you guys award this bid, you're not selecting the brand. The vendor will come back with a proposal, with a lighting design, that you may use one brand, it may use several, and at that point, if we felt uncomfortable with another brand, we had sort of discussed maybe bringing in an electrical engineer, just to give it a once-over and make sure that we're making the right decision.
The other thing I was gonna say is thank you for doing all this work. I know it's your job, but it's good work.
Yeah.
Good project.
Rory knows a lot about LED lighting at this point.
Start a company now.
Yeah. And again, the hope is that we pay for this in cash, at least that's the goal. Based on the surplus we're gonna have for fiscal year 16, we should have enough available through the surplus to pay for this in cash. So residents will see the impact of the savings immediately, which is very good. But we'll have a better idea by the middle of the month, based on the 60-day accruals. So we should start seeing that in the next week or so. Any other questions for Rory? Excellent, thanks Rory.
Thanks Rory.
So Rory and Tony will have a recommendation at our next meeting, as to the direction we'll go. Okay, item number 12, appointments. Karen Stanek, Commissioner on the Aging, a reappointment, it's a two-year term, expires Motion by Al, seconded by Stephen. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Cheer votes aye, motion passes six zero. Okay, item number 13, tax refunds and abatements, Nicole.
Do we have them?
Oh, we don't have the first page. No, it's just the back page. So just wing it.
All right. September 2nd, 2016, to the Board of Selectmen from Dana Flock Tax Office. Oh, thank you. The following overpayments of tax payments in total of $1,328.27 need to be approved for refund in accordance with provisions of Section 12-129 of the Connecticut General Statute. Dana Flock Tax Office.
Excellent, thank you, Nicole. Yep, at this point, I'll entertain a motion to accept the tax collector's report as presented.
So move?
Motion by Ann Marie, seconded by Nicole. Under discussion, everybody just give it a quick look, make sure there's no conflicts. Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Cheer votes aye, motion passes, bless you.
Bless you.
Six zero. Item number 14 is transfers. We have no transfers before us tonight. Item number 15, correspondence. We have several pieces of correspondence. The first is the check register. Next is a letter to myself, Judy Simpson, the Chairwoman of Culture and Arts, and the entire board, resignation of Mary Barben from the committee. Oh, that's why it's on the back.
What?
The...
I'm gonna get that, even.
Yeah, sorry. We also have a letter from resident Joseph Luciano as public comment, and it has to do with correspondence, as well as ADA compliance of the brand-new curb cuts downtown. And he goes into also a history of town halls, permissive attitude on sale flag displays, and other protruding objects, so this will be added to our minutes, as always, and made a part of the official record. We have an FOI request from Robert Kowskowski to the Board of Public Works, looking for specific information with regards to work that was done on state roads, so that will be addressed through Public Works. We also have a letter from Town Council to the Board of Police Commissioners, and to its chairman, Robert Kowskowski, with regards to potential violations of Connecticut Freedom of Information Act. You can see that in the packet. Rich, is it appropriate to read this into the record, or no?
Whatever you want to do.
Okay. So it's, so Dear Chairman Kowskowski, as Town Council, was brought to my attention that the Board of Police Commissioners, at the regularly scheduled meeting held on August 17, 2016, went into executive session after the public comment portion of the meeting. Commissioner Bitso moved, and Commissioner Conroy seconded the motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel and strategy issues. The motion was passed unanimously at 8:26 PM. 26 minutes later, the board came out of executive session. Unfortunately, the executive session was not on the agenda. At no time during the meeting did any commissioner move to add the executive session to the agenda. Connecticut General Statute, Section 2-225(c) provides that, upon the affirmative vote, two-thirds of the members of a public agency present in voting any subsequent business not included in such filed agendas may be considered and act upon at such meeting. In other words, at a regularly scheduled board meeting, you may add an item to the agenda. By an affirmative vote of two-thirds of the members, the failure to follow this process is a violation of the Connecticut Freedom of Information Act. As you are aware, as you are probably aware, excuse me, Section 1-200, subsection 6 of the Connecticut General Statutes restricts the grounds for an executive session to certain specific categories of discussion. For example, strategy is not a proper basis for an executive session unless it is strategy with respect to pending claim or pending litigation. Simply put, an executive session based upon strategy by itself is a violation of the Freedom of Information Act. Finally, the personnel exception pertaining to executive session as set forth by Section 2-225(a) requires that public agency to give notice to employee, and the employee has the right to require the discussion to be held in public session. In the event the employee or employees were not informed of the executive session, and given the option to have the discussion held in public session, the executive session would be deemed improper. And some, if you have questions regarding compliance with the Connecticut Freedom of Information Act, please don't hesitate to contact me. Sincerely yours, Richard J. Beterla, Seymour Town Council. So, this was brought to my attention. Actually, I read it when I was looking through the minutes, and I brought it to Rich's attention, so we wanted to make this known to the Board of Police Commissioners, so we don't have any potential issues down the road. Also received in your packets, a letter from the Board of Police Commissioners, parking stipulations by the Board of Police Commissioners. We had talked about making some changes to the downtown area to improve traffic flow. I asked the Commissioners to take a look at that, and they sent the attached letter, which again, I'll read into the record. At the August 17, 2016, meeting of the Board of Police Commissioners, a motion was made and approved to address the regulations for overnight parking in the downtown areas of Seymour. Those regulations are to take effect by October 1st, 2016, are as follows. No overnight parking from 12:00 midnight to 5:00 AM on Sunday through Thursday on the following streets. Columbus, First, Wyclie, DeForest, Bank, Main Street. No overnight parking from 1:00 AM to 5:00 AM on Fridays and Saturdays on the same list of streets. As a note, I'll be meeting with several members of the professional staff tomorrow, our engineer, police chief, and so on and so forth, to put the strategy together, to get the signs ordered, and have those up by the first of the month, as requested by the Board of Police Commissioners. The other one is street signs and speed. At the August 17, 2016, meeting of the Board of Police Commissioners, a recommendation was made to have speed limit designations painted on streets in town to notify the motoring public of the speed limits on those streets. The board was concerned about the speed of vehicles on our major thoroughfares, and believes that this will help to slow down those motorists who are unfamiliar with the limits in different areas of town. This letter was dated August 18th. The next day, I sent a letter to the Chief of Police, asking him to indicate which streets they are talking about, so we can have an understanding of that. Also, to get an idea of the costs, and what the Board of Police Commissioners has budgeted for this, to make sure that whatever work we do stays within the budget they've accorded in the police department's budget. So, if you have any questions on any of that, please let me know, and we'll go from there.
I was trying to make sure I understood what you read. They want to paint the speed limit signs on the road.
Correct.
Spray paint, good.
Yeah.
Speed limit.
Yeah.
How often, how many will they do?
How many feet?
And that's, and that's why I sent that request back to the Chief, just to give a little bit more clarification on what they're looking for, and, you know, and what deems a major thoroughfare. Just want to make sure that we're hitting the requests that they're asking for. So, and again, too, this is not gonna be a cheap thing to do, so I just want to get an understanding, too, of what they have budgeted for that, and so on.
Is that gonna come before us, or is that...
The Chief is the traffic authority by charter of the town of Seymour.
Okay.
Yeah. It would come before us if there was a need for a potential transfer. That's what would come for us. But again, whatever response I get back from the Chief will be out of his correspondence. Okay, so that closes correspondence. Item 16, public comment. Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment? Name and address for the record, as always, Mr. Flynn.
Mike LeWey, Flynn, 85 Spokane Road Street, Seymour, Connecticut. One thing I think you should address to the Board of Police Commissioners, I think it should also be addressed to our state representatives. That's the problem of tailgating in this state. It's a local problem, too. You can't get out, you do the speed limit, you get somebody on your rear end constantly. You can't even go out for a Sunday ride anymore, in any part of the state. You don't want some, I was going through Bethany, some guy was about three inches away from me. I had to pull over to let him drive by. It's a problem in this town, too. People just don't want to, if someone's doing the limit, you wind up getting somebody hugging you on your rear end. I think a few tickets passed out might rectify the situation, you know? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. Is there any other public comments? Is there any other public comments? Okay, hearing no other public comment, we will close public comment, we'll move to item number 17, Selectmen's public comment. Stephen? Okay. Nicole?
I'm all set, thank you.
Wow, you two start to try and... Al Bruno? Ann Marie?
I do.
Always one in every group.
First of all, I'd like to recognize the Seymour Police Department, and Chief Metzler, Deputy Chief Zakowski, and...
Inspector Denevers?
Inspector Denevers, yes, I was trying to remember his title, sorry. I'm very proud that they're representing Seymour and Washington. On the August 16, 2016, the Advancing to the 21st Century Policing, it was very nice, very nice to see Connecticut and Seymour recognized in that area. Also, as well as with the Tea with Tracy, it was during the day, so I was unable to attend, but I kind of hope that they do do something at night. And I was unable to attend the NAACP turnout in Ansonia, but I heard that there was some Seymour residents there, Chief Metzler, and some of the Seymour Police Department was there as well. So that was great to see that, you know, we're getting involved, and it's what Stefan has mentioned, doing, you know, that's, it's what everybody is doing now, so it's great to see that Seymour's coming into loop with it. On the downtown trick-or-treating parade, it's nice to see the kids are actually gonna be getting more involved, and getting the school involved, the older kids involved that don't really trick-or-treat, because they don't want to, but it's getting the town involved, almost kind of like Halloween town. Alana still watches it, so, you know. I think the scarecrows are a really great idea. I know in Vermont, they make, in Pittsfield, they have the hay bales, they actually make them into different things, and you vote on them, and whoever wins, you know, they get recognized, and I think that, maybe that's something that we can start getting the, they can get the vendors in on, is people, the residents vote on something like that. So, nice recognition.
I know there's certain towns that do cows and pigs and different things they decorate in their downtown area, and they have a little contest each year, so yeah, that could be a good thing. Tony, I agree, too, on the NAACP event, it was nice to see all four Valley Chiefs up there together, answering questions. I think it was a very well-done event, and I think, you know, with what's going on, it was certainly very important to have. So I look forward to what we're gonna be doing in Seymour at the end of the month. I believe we have a date set, hopefully the 28th, for that, so I think that's a good thing, so. Len?
Ann Marie seems to have stolen my thunder. I wanted to say the same thing, but I'll just reiterate. Congratulations, and thank you to the Seymour Police Department for taking these steps to improve the community and their visibility, especially given what's going on right now. And I'm just pretty excited to hear about these, the Halloween parade. I know I'll have a very excited three-year-old at home, who's planning on being a scary kitty this year, as opposed to just a regular kitty like last year.
Ooh.
And that should be a really good thing. Pretty much all I have.
Excellent. Just as a reminder, I'll be leaving on Friday. We'll be leaving Seymour around 1:00 o'clock. I expect to be back at some point on Tuesday with the time change, I don't really know what time I'm gonna be landing, but I'll be reaching out to all of our emergency management chiefs to make sure that they are aware. Any emergency that may arise while I'm gone, Nicole will be able to handle without any issues. I'm not gonna be easily accessible. Obviously, the town is, does not provide me with an international plan, so I won't be making any calls, but everything will be through email. Rob Dyer is actually setting me up with a tablet, so I'll be able to have internet access for emails and things like that, but there's obviously gonna be a delay, and I believe I am eight hours ahead of everyone, so that'll be, is it six?
I think six.
Six hours. So that's that, but any day-to-day operational stuff will be taken care of by Doug, Tony, and Rory, but again, I'm really gonna be only out of the office a half-day Fri... Well, I'll actually be here the whole time Friday, and just Monday and Tuesday, so I don't expect any issues, so. And Nicole will keep us safe.
It will, no worries.
No worries, so. Rich, any comments? No? Mrs. McMurray, I just like saying that, no? Nope? Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion to...
Second.
Motion by Ann Marie, seconded by Nicole. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Cheer votes aye, motion passes six zero. Mark the meeting closed at 8:00, excuse me, 7:56 PM.
I've never been able to...